The first of a series of town halls that Portland Council PTA and the school districts are putting on for you to talk about whatever you'd like to talk about with your school board representatives who are present today. So, just welcome, and probably it helps maybe to know where you're from. So, how many of you are from an elementary school on the west side? How about anybody from a middle school on the west side? High school?
K-8.
K-8. Okay. How about anybody from North Portland? What area, what part of the elementary?
It's a middle slash high school alternative school.
Okay. How about anybody from the east side, northeast or southeast? And I know we have high school, high school, K-8. And where are you guys, community?
Community.
Community, yeah.
Community.
Good, good. Well, welcome, everybody, and I'll turn this over now to your board members who will entertain whatever it is that you will tell them.
So, thanks so much. I think I'll just kick things off real quick. I'm Ruth Atkins. I live a block from here, and I've had the honor of being the board representative from Zone 1, i.e. Wilson Cluster and a little slice of southeast since 2007. And then with me are Greg Belial and Bobby Regan, also sit on the board. But I've been asked as kind of the nominal host, living a block from here, to just kind of go over the introduction piece real quick, and then we'll get in.
A little louder.
All right, and then we'll get into your questions and answers. I would ask folks to go ahead and move on up to, I will try to speak up, but definitely don't be afraid of us, we won't bite. So, we've got staff here who are going to be recording your questions, and I can guarantee that I at least will not have answers to everything that comes up tonight. So, we will, they have committed that they're going to follow up within a week to get the answers out to these questions that may come up that we aren't able to answer tonight. We do ask that folks keep your comments or questions to about 60 seconds in length if you can, just so as many people as possible tonight will have a chance to weigh in. And we do ask that each person ask their one question and let others ask before they come back and ask a second question. Again, just so we can get to everybody who wants to have their say. And obviously, we need to be respectful of each other's views and opinions. We all feel very passionately about our kids and our schools and our community, and we just want this to be a place where we can express different points of view and respect each other in that. So, with that, I think there's, if anyone needed interpretation or childcare, I think that was on the sign-in out there, is everyone okay from that perspective? Okay, we really appreciate you all coming out tonight. Obviously, there's a million other things you could be doing with your time, so we'd greatly appreciate that you've taken the time to come out tonight, and we're really happy to be here to attempt to answer, or at the very least to hear, your questions and comments and concerns, suggestions, whatever it is you've brought through you tonight. So, just before we launch into the question and answers, we did want to do a quick, a few minutes really quickly around a new campaign that's a grassroots campaign to build support for public education going into the 2015 legislative session. As you probably know, in the last session, we got a very welcome turnaround in education funding that helped us begin to start rebuilding back our public schools, and we really need to keep the pressure on to make public school funding a priority. So, the Promise of Oregon campaign is what this is called. It's a statewide grassroots campaign. It's been funded by the Oregon School Boards Association, statewide organization, which our very own Bobby is the president-elect incoming, and has been super active for years building relationships around the state with other school boards. So, the goal again is it's a campaign that's going to feature students. We've got a really short video to show you. I think they have some sign-in sheets, if anyone is interested in finding out more or how you can get involved. But it's the campaign that features students, including at Branson PTO. And again, the goal is to remind legislators of the importance of public schools for our students and for the future of our state. So, with that, unless there's anything else, maybe we could watch the video real quick.
It's just a one-minute primer. It's going to be rolled out in the full campaign in November.
I'm the Promise of Oregon because I want to be a guardian and make more air in the world.
For our children. So, with that, I think we could just, John, are you going to be our?
I can get this around in case anyone didn't get a chance to see it.
And John, are you going to be like our caller on her?
No.
It doesn't have to be me either. Do we want to start off?
I'll be brave.
Yes, ma'am.
Neighbor, hi. I'm a strong believer in hands-on education, particularly outdoor education for learning science, and we have a wonderful program for that called Outdoor School, but it's, now it's only happening, the kids only, the sixth graders only go for half a week. And so, I think I would like to see the district go back to the full week. And I just wanted to remind you, I know it costs over a million dollars, but, you know, one day of that could be paid, is paid for by Metro, one day is paid by the parents whose kids go, one day, or a half a day is this year being paid for by Soil and Water Conservation District. So, there are a lot of other pots of money, so this district wouldn't be paying the whole amount. So, my question is, who can I work with in the administration to make this happen?
I think you're basically going to end up working with the board, probably, because my guess is in the budget cycle, this will be one of the things that comes up as a potential priority. And I think that you've seen the board talking quite a bit recently, wanting to have lots of experiential, project-based, hands-on learning opportunities. So, Outdoor Schools is, for those of you who aren't familiar with it, is a program, it's a five-day program for sixth graders. And they basically go away, and they, it's four nights, five days, and they go away.
It used to be that long.
And it's also, other Multnomah County school districts participate as well. While it has incredible benefits for our sixth graders, it also has incredible benefits for high school students who end up often volunteering as counselors, and many of them actually learn that they love to teach and often become teachers as a result of that experience. But it's incredible leadership opportunities for our high school kids also. So, during the 10 years, up until last year, of budget cuts, that was one of the things that we had considered cutting completely, and we didn't do that. In part, if Portland Public Schools were to cut out of that program completely, it would probably go away completely, because we are the anchor school. And I know for myself, I would absolutely love to have it come back to a full five-day program again. I think it's an incredible experience for kids. And it's a real equalizer for a lot of kids, especially some of our high-poverty kids. They've never had the experience of being out in the wilderness and camping. I mean, it's experiential on so many levels, including deep, deep science, and just an opportunity to get to know kids from, you know, all walks of life.
Yeah, well said.
And I'll just mention that my daughter is there right now.
Hopefully, not getting rid of that.
She's about to get rid of that. That's all part of the experience.
So, I think it was Mike, I think Mike was next.
On the budget for Outdoor School, those other partners, did they come in when the cuts started, or are they long-term funders? And then, what would the Portland Public Schools' cost be to restore it to a full week?
I have been told that the cost for Portland Public School would be about a million dollars. So, I'm not exactly sure what the number is, or if that includes the partners or not. We do have several partners who participate with us, including Metro and including Friends of Outdoor School, and including parents. Parents do pay some to participate. In the scope of things, it's not a huge amount of money, but, you know, a million dollars is, you know, 10 teachers, too. So, I mean, that's what you do when you're looking at budgets, is you figure out where you're going to prioritize. So, I don't know that we have a consensus on the board at this point that we will definitely bring that back. I know it's already been suggested by several board members that we are very interested in bringing it back.
Right.
So, I hope you'll participate in the board meetings during budget cycle, too.
And my understanding was that it was primarily just school district funded, and then as year after year, as budgets got smaller and smaller, it kept coming up as something to cut. And that's when communities, there's Friends of Outdoor School, parents began to rally, Metro came in, soil conservation, everybody began to realize the value that it had beyond just the K-12 education. So, I think that's when they came in.
So, next question?
Just a point of information, Rex Burkholder, who used to be Metro counselor, is trying to get statewide funding through, I'm not, I can't, I'm sorry, I can't remember the nonprofit that he's working through to do it out. Not to let you guys out.
No. So, I think.
We couldn't think of anyone else.
Yeah. Michael.
So, it seems to me that technology has potential to be a great force multiplier for our limited number of teachers to help students learn. I see very little of it, particularly here at Wilson High School. Where does that fit in the board's priorities?
Yeah, I mean, I think that's one of the pieces where, where what we need to be able to have staff do is step back and kind of do an audit or a census of what is available across the district. I know just recently, Principal Shittard here at Wilson just did the Trojan Throwdown and raised additional money, because there really was, and, yeah, to get Chromebooks, which are less expensive and very useful to have in the building, in mobile carts. So, I think that is an area where it's time for us to be able to, so now that we're finally getting out of the budget cuts mode, to be able, I would like to be able to see kind of what is available across the district, whether it's between district investment, grants, fundraising, other pieces, where does, what's kind of our status quo, and then where are there still gaps going forward? Because it's definitely been, it's been uneven.
Well, and we, just this last funding year, as budgets have improved, we just bought a whole bunch of tech bundles for all of our teachers. We're making another investment with this additional money that we didn't realize was going to be there. In addition to that, we've looked, the couple of years that I've been on the board, we've looked at online learning, trying to figure out how do we use that across. And so, we've, right now, prioritized folks who are credit deficient, and so how do we get them up? But what we also realized is, we looked at other school districts and other schools that are doing this, is there's this kind of belief that you could have, couldn't you have one teacher and 60 students? And what winds up is the students, especially that struggle, you can't do that. They still need that regular check-in, and that becomes too many. And so, we're still wrestling with how do we use that as, to its multiplier effect? But I still think it's a priority, and again, I believe that we're about to invest in a small amount of money, I think it's $200,000, in an audit of our technology, because we also realize that we're not even clear what's in our buildings anymore, and we need to get a handle on that, as we've been saying, so that we can move forward.
I'd say another piece of that, though, is making sure that we have people in every school who can actually work on and maintain our technology, and that's as big an issue as the technology itself, is making sure they're all operational. So, it isn't just the expense of the computer or the software, but it's also the ongoing expense of keeping it up to speed, so. And of course, not just computers or Chromebooks or iPads, but the, well, I think even smartboards are now getting to be outdated, so I'm dating myself by even mentioning that, but other tools for teachers. It just always sticks with me, it was actually several years ago, but going into George Middle School and seeing, I think it was a, it was a math class, and doing geometry on the smartboard and how the kids were interacting, I was also over at Chief Joe. It's happening in a lot of buildings, but we need to make sure that the tools are available in all our buildings as we start to keep, continue to, as we continue to rebuild from the years of disinvestment.
Thank you.
Will?
On that theme briefly, I've, one concern is that technology is not machines. It's a way of learning, and if we don't have the integrated curriculum and overall preparation, you're spending money going down a rat hole, basically. I have another concern around resources, which has to do with the way it's allocated across the city. Kids with special needs, that are not making it for various reasons, definitely need priority. However, their ability to get that depends on where they live in the city. In the southwest, where we have relatively few kids, one in five, there are thousands of kids who have a relatively small percentage of the resources. Thought towards something that gets a child-specific rather than school-specific services would help us get a better handle. Along those lines, there's always the issue of how much money is available. I've lost touch with, as of today, compared, I've lost a lot of touch, but, as of today, compared to back before Measure 5, how are we doing in Portland Public Schools in adequate per pupil funding to make these things happen? Are we ahead, behind, how much behind, and where are we?
I think as a percentage of the state budget.
Around 39%.
Yeah, I think we're down, it's just barely started to creep back up from, so it's, I think it maybe made it back up to 40%? It might be, that might be on one of those. And then we get roughly, I believe it's 8% of whatever the statewide number is through the unbelievably complex formula that they have, as you know. So, I would say, again, is that it's been going down like this, and then we're just beginning to turn the corner.
And I, I mean, I'm just thinking that if you're really looking for inflation-adjusted dollars from before Measure 90 and then now, I mean, I wouldn't have that off the top of my head. But it's, I think that we can get it and put it up, because it's worth looking at.
Well, and just the state's own, you know, I feel like a broken record on this, but the state's own quality education model, we are still, and Otto, you probably know what percentage we're finally.
It's around $2 billion, Charlie.
Yeah, we're around $2 billion.
With the improve.
Right, we're 75% of what's called the quality education model, which people say, shouldn't every kid have music? Shouldn't every kid have art? Shouldn't every kid have PE? Shouldn't every kid, yes?
Yes.
And the state cost that out and figured out what it would cost for every school district, and that's what Otto was saying.
But only to get 90% of students to vouch for it?
Only get 90% of students, right.
Not 100% graduation, not 100% anything.
It's $2 billion more than we have now, which is about 75% of the school, of the funding.
Hence, the concern and the need for our grassroots campaign to really remind legislators, yes, you were awesome last session, it was great, thank you for the additional funding, but we're not done yet as a state. Obviously, this relates to a larger question, or a larger debate around tax reform, to be able to move forward. A little above our pay grade, but it's a huge part of the mix. I know a lot of you have been out there toiling in the trenches for decades on this issue. I mean, I had a baby, you know, a baby in a sling in Salem, who's now in the workforce. But, you know, so be it, we'll just have to keep, we have to just keep at it. So, the other thing to keep in mind in terms of funding is that we also provide funding at the local level through a local levy. And I think that we've had a levy in place so long that people don't realize how many teachers it actually pays for. So, right now, our current local levy pays for 600 teaching positions. That's almost a quarter of our teachers in Portland Public Schools are paid for with local dollars. You know, some would argue that we shouldn't have to put in local dollars, that it is the state's responsibility to educate our children, but that tells you how far behind we are. And just so you know, we are going out for an early renewal of our local levy, and that's been confusing for people, because we just passed it in 2011, we passed it overwhelmingly in 2011. But the reason we're going out is we discovered that a portion of our local levy now that's collected in urban renewal areas in Portland, those monies are actually staying in the urban renewal areas. And so, urban renewal's been getting a windfall from our local teacher levy. And we went to the city, and they agreed with us. We went to the state with them, and we got that law changed, but it's only for levies going forward. So, we are going out in November, just so everyone knows, to renew our teacher levy early, the exact same rate, and we'll end up with about another $4.5 million to pay for teachers next year, which will be another 40 or 50 teachers for next year, which is a pretty big deal. So, just so you know that.
Yeah. I think you're.
Okay, so, actually, Mr. Belial, I just touched on this about the inequities, music, about music, but I think we have a particularly bad one here in Portland. My child goes to Capitol Hill Elementary, where there is no music. The principal has decided that they'd have a full-time art teacher. So, you get that arts tax thing that has happy kids playing instruments, and well, not my kid. I'm a music teacher in Beaverton, where we have 90 minutes of PE and 90 minutes of music every week mandated by the school board. So, my question is to you, or my suggestion to you, is as a school board, should principals have that kind of discretion, when it could be the overwhelming majority of parents that want maybe to have half and half, or, because we have a full-time art teacher? You know, we've offered certain monkeys and stuff, but I don't think our principal, and I think those other ones really want to know with what they have going on. Plus, and I would encourage everyone to read the Wall Street Journal's article this last week about a musical fix for schools. The research overwhelmingly shows for math and science test scores and reading test scores, how it can improve. But there isn't really much research that says iPads in the hands of kindergarteners in primary grades, K-1, 2 does. But we're spending a lot of money on that, too. So, I encourage the board to take a look at the inequities district-wide about music, even once a week would make me happy, frankly, but to have none in some schools, and then have district-funded, not just PTO, but district-funded money paying for K-8s and stuff, seems pretty inequitable. So, I encourage you to take a look.
Yeah, thanks for raising that. I mean, I think that's been one of the challenges for a long time, is figuring out what is that balance between the individual discretion at the school level versus sort of mandating district-wide? And we haven't found that perfect balance, for sure, especially in what's been a cuts environment for a long time. So, I think, you know, one of the pieces, I don't know if you're familiar, that PSU, Portland State, is assisting us with, not just, it started out as sort of, we need to do district-wide boundary review, and what they came back with after talking to a lot of folks, both within the district and out in the community, was, it's not just about boundaries, you need to talk about programs, what's available in different schools, what should be available, what should the configurations be post-K-8 several years in. So, that's going to be a huge challenge for us to take on, and I think a really, really important piece, thankfully with PSU's help, because they're amazing, to be able to do, just to have that greater kind of transparency and accessibility to understand, there's a lot of data about it, but it's not always easy for the public to find or for parents to see. And again, to have that conversation more about what is that balance between local decision-making versus district-wide?
And I think Portland has struggled with that sometimes more than others, that if you mandate it from central, right, central district, this is just something that we're doing. Oftentimes, we get this big roar of like, oh, my gosh, central office, get out of schools, my school knows what's best, stop mandating to the, and then what happens is when we let it go, right, then we hear the other folks and people say, what are you doing? How can you have these inequities? How can, and so, it's two coins. And what I've seen, if I look at a district right to our east, like David Douglas, who has band orchestra and choir, K-6, they committed through it all the way through the recession, all the way through it. What they gave up was class size. So, they had first, second, third graders with 35 kids, 36 kids. That hasn't been the value that I've heard consistently from our community. So, I do think that it's a community conversation, because I know that there are some places I go and I hear just as adamantly, visual arts has to be in there. How can that possibly be an option? Music, yes, but it needs to be visual arts. So, I think the struggle is having those tensions and then having a place, which we hope this district boundary will get us to enough community members to have that conversation so that we can land comfortably somewhere, or uncomfortably somewhere, but realize that there are multiple viewpoints to it.
The other thing, too, is loss of capacity at the central office, and just in terms of having a strategic vision and plan for what are we going to do with all the arts, with athletics, all the other pieces that have been cut and shipped away at year after year. And honestly, when you lose that capacity, then there isn't someone whose job it is, it doesn't, it falls off the radar, and we're all, you know, none of us would disagree. We all would want our kids to all have visual arts and music and dance and PE and everything else, but we need to be able to build that back.
And full disclosure, as I pointed out to you, I'm a music teacher. I couldn't agree more that it's fundamental to everybody and everything, that it's not an extra, that it will actually help improve. So, this isn't me trying to step out of or trying to get out of something, but it is acknowledgement that different, when I talk to different people, I hear different sets of priorities, and that's what typically struggles.
I would also say, in terms of the arts tax in Portland, that was K-5. We did hire a arts TOSA in the district, a teacher on special assignment, and the job of the arts TOSA is to figure out how we're going to articulate all the way up through high school, starting with K-5, because you don't want your kids to have art or music K-5, and then at sixth grade, there's nothing there, there anymore. And so, that's also going to be one of the things. When we just had the additional monies that came in, one of the big conversation topics was, for one time, money was, could we buy some musical instruments? And can we start looking at that at the middle school level? Because, you know, our kids are so far behind other suburban districts, if they, if the other districts are doing music, starting in our band and orchestra, starting in middle school, when our kids are touching an instrument for the first time in ninth grade, it's crazy. So, you know, it is one of these things that we're looking to build back and articulate all the way through the system.
Exactly.
We have a long way to go.
Sorry. So, here and then here.
I was just going to add, my child's also at Capitol Hill, also in first grade, and we have 30 kids in his class. So, you know, not that much different from David Douglas, where they have music, have obviously more children, which we don't, none of us want. But our building is also at max capacity. So, and all we keep hearing is, but we don't have a room for music, we don't have a room to add a teacher, even if we had the money. So, as a new family to the school, it's been very frustrating, and I can see the frustration on the teacher, and she's an amazing teacher. It breaks my heart to see, you know, worksheets being passed out instead of actually engaging students. It breaks my heart.
We agree. So, we added, this year, we were able to add about 200 additional teachers. You'll hear the number a lot, that we, that there are 500 new teachers in Portland Public Schools, the other 300 or more as a result of retirements and the rest. So, you know, when we had the opportunity with additional money, that's where we put it. We added two days of school, and we added, you know, 200 more teaching positions in the buildings. So, we're trying to get there, but, you know, we've had 10 years of cuts last year, so it was the first year of stability. So, I mean, we're actually in a really exciting place right now, if we can all just hang on, because the economy is coming back, and, you know, we, we got a great teacher contract where we added a lot of additional staff. We're trying to get workloads down for our teachers. So, there's a lot of really good things happening, but we're coming out of a really deep decline in budgets for a long period of time.
You also raised a really important piece, sorry, around the facility challenges that we're facing.
And transfers, I just want to add that really quick. We've been accepting transfers when the school's already over capacity.
Now, that's one issue that could.
Which is a huge issue. We should not, all these, certain schools are closed, but Capital's accepting transfer students. When we're already, our classes are huge, and we have no more additional space.
Right. And a lot of, I mean, I think just about every building, K-5s in this cluster, with the possible exception of Markham, I mean, built really small.
Yeah.
And they're just, the building size is not there.
Yeah, the old, yeah.
So, and a lot of other buildings in the district as well, but particularly in this part of town, it's just a real challenge, and they're located much farther apart. So, there aren't any easy answers for any of this. And obviously, many years ago, there was the closure of Smith, and now we're turning back around and enrollment to the point where we're feeling the pain of over-enrollment rather than the pain of dropping enrollment and closing schools. So, even though it's, overall, we're in a better place, it's, it's very painful at the individual school level in a lot of cases. We should probably move on, because you were.
Well, and I kind of go on, I'm also at Capitol Hill with a kindergartner and a second grader in classes of 31 each. And I posed the question to the building of Stevenson, I'm on the border of Stevenson, and Stevenson's kindergarten, they have two of 18 each. And I posed the question, why can't I just, I was volunteering, I'll bus my kid to Stevenson's. The bus goes by my house, same as Capitol Hill, and there's a lot of us on the border that would be willing to move, but we, if, you know, that transfer process was back in March, and we can't do anything about it. And that seems really silly, because in the past, I've heard many situations where schools have bused a whole class of kids to another school where there was room, to alleviate the problem. Now, instead of in a year or two after there's a lot of discussion, I'm a teacher, so I know the process well, I, I mean, anyways.
Yeah.
It takes forever to go through a process, but why is it that we can't just solve the problem when there, there is a solution for Capitol Hill right now? The second grade has 24 kids there, and 31 at Capitol Hill with a two and a half second grades and two and a half third grades. And anyway, so I'm just looking, I'm trying to look at some creative solutions, and I'm wondering if the board can help look at some of those solutions that could be done now.
Well, I think that's really, I mean, it's not something that we typically don't get involved down at the school level, that type of issue, but I think that's something that staff could take back to the area director, who is, who are, they are the ones who are involved working with the principals to figure these things out.
Yes, well, I was told it wasn't the school-level decision, so that's fine.
Well, I mean, the person high, the next level up at the district, I mean, that's, that's who we look to. When we hear individual issues from schools, which of course we do all the time, we aren't the ones who are in there day-to-day figuring this out, so I definitely would want them to weigh in. I mean, right now, we do have, you know, so we have the Superintendent's Advisory Committee on Enrollment and Transfer that's looking at the very issue around neighborhood-to-neighborhood transfers, hardship appeals, using the equity lens, and this is, you know, we need to update our policy. So, that's one piece that's coming. Knowing that that alone isn't going to fix all these issues, but it's an important piece, as well as the PSU and the kind of broader conversation that I mentioned before, which doesn't give you an immediate answer or solution. I know that staff has sort of triaged, I mean, you know, we, again, being a growing district, we're now in a position with some buildings that are just, I mean, we've got one that's going, we've got kids at three different buildings because of overflow. So my sense of it is that staff has really been triaging and trying to, what they call it the hotspots, but the very worst, but that doesn't alleviate the fact that it's, again, there's issues all, all across the district like the one you're talking about. So here and then-
You know, I, I, I also have a daughter who's going to be in Capitol Hill next year, so.
Capitol Hill continues to happen.
I guess I'm wondering, and I've heard about the class sizes, three of them are 30-plus, and it sounds like there's a solution coming maybe soon, later rather than sooner?
Well, I mean, in the case of a smaller building where you're out of room, and potentially would have to be boundaries, boundary changes. Well, portable, yeah, portables are an expensive solution, that's, that's always on the list as a possibility, they are expensive, but a boundary solution would, would be another approach, a boundary of change to the boundaries. Could I ask, with your kindergarten child in a class of 30, do you have an education assistant in that classroom?
They just got two educational assistants for the three kindergartens, so they're sharing them.
Okay. Because that was certainly our understanding, is that we were trying to keep them 25 or below, or an education assistant comes in.
But that doesn't really do-
No, it's not ideal, obviously, right?
I mean, it helps.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
I'm sorry, the lady here was first. Not, not to echo everything that's been said at the elementary level, but we're in the Hayhurst district, and I have a child that's going to be going to Hayhurst, and a lot of the parents in the neighborhood are, they have kindergartners and first graders, and again, the 30-plus size. We also have the added situation of Odyssey being K-38 side of the building. So, you know, it's, my understanding, it's just really scary as a parent that has children going into elementary. There's a lot of parents talking about trying to transfer them out to schools that have smaller, you know, like a Stevenson, or, you know, other, other places that are smaller classrooms, but it's a huge concern when you have kids going into elementary, when you're hearing 30 and 32, and kindergarten and first grade, and wondering about, you know, is there talk about opening some of the schools, like Smith, or, you know, other schools that have closed to accommodate all those other scenarios?
Yeah, I haven't, I haven't heard that so far. I mean, I think certainly down the horizon, there's a few buildings that have been closed that would potentially be reopened. I know for, the main thing that's been talked about for Smith, though, would be, since we're fortunate to have the capital bond, as we start rebuilding schools, we do want to have a place that's fairly close by for students to go to while their school is being rebuilt. That's the main thing that, that I have heard. But certainly, if the growth continues the way it is, I mean, we're running out of space, for sure, and totally hear your concerns, so about that.
I just, I want to highlight, not that this will be lost on anybody, and I, we, we don't want, I don't know anybody that says, "Oh, 30 or 31 is okay," but we are trying to remove that, and it's good to hear exactly where it's happening, Hayhurst, Capitol Hill. But I also want to note that this also slightly changes a little bit, depending on the economy. And the reason I say that is because there was a school in southeast, also actually, in Lewellin, who was overcrowding, and they were busting at the seams. And so two years ago, before we decided to take this district-wide look at boundaries, they did a boundary adjustment with a neighboring school, and in the past two years, they're starting to see relief, they're starting to see a lowering of the number of students. What that has meant is they've lost two teachers. And now they're really upset, because they're like, "How can we be losing kids?" Remember that we use a formula that bases funding on the number of kids in your school, and so they're getting frustrated. And so I saw some principals, when economy was, when they kept getting cuts, that they actually really wanted those kids, because they could maintain offerings that was some semblance of an education that they wanted to offer the kids. And not that anybody wanted still 30 or 31 kids in their class, but it was, it was a strategy, and now that we're beginning to reinvest it, it becomes, it becomes unbearable. Now we don't have space for the electives that we want, and now we have the funds that we could do an elective. It, it becomes a slight shift, and it's hard, as a big system, right, with 85 schools to change on a dime with facilities that were built 60 to 100 years ago, with this idea that everybody was walking to school, except in the southwest, which is still driving, but still small neighborhood schools.
No sidewalks, but that's another issue. Yes, ma'am.
So I am a Capitol Hill parent, I have a first grader and a fifth grader as well, the fifth grader has 33 to 35 kids in his class. So what is involved in the boundary change? And if we just, if we did a boundary change, and we reduced class sizes to a reasonable amount of 25 kids, why would we be losing, why would it be possible to lose teachers? It still seems that there would be enough funding at 25 children per class to have enough teachers in a school.
So your, the, the student teacher ratio is what determines funding, and typically, you're going to end up having to fund your extra teachers, your enrichment teachers out of that same pot of funds. And so some principals will choose to have higher individual class sizes so that they can offer more enrichments, some will choose to have less enrichments, and then have lower class sizes, and some of that's dependent on the building and what you actually have the capacity to do anyway. And that's sort of gets back to the question that we heard earlier about, you know, your, your top-down in what you're going to do, because I suppose we could say, nobody has more than 25 kids in a class, but what you're probably going to lose is an enrichment teacher or two in that process. And so, and every class is always, I mean, every school's going to always have some flexibility in terms of their class sizes. So, I mean, the good news is that our enrollment is going up, that means more dollars into the system to allow for more opportunities and more enrichment. A lot of times where we are now compromised is the size of our buildings themselves, and then what that causes us to have to do. One of the things in terms of our one-time funds that just, we were just talking about, is we are, I believe, looking at the potential of putting some more portables throughout the system next year. Every time you do a portable, it's about a $500,000 expense, that's two classrooms. And you also then need to have a place for it, where it doesn't compromise, you know, your play structures or your fields or whatever. So it's not an ideal solution, but it may be the solution that we are going to be coming up with in the next couple of years, as we wait for our bond funds to go through and start rebuilding as we go.
And portables is real, I mean, they're really modular buildings, I mean, the requirements of the city-
They're actually really nice.
Yeah, yeah, the cost is high, because the city requires such a high level of code and reviews and everything else, but they're actually fairly permanent once they go in.
Change in process, reviewing boundaries, is that like a one-year process? Is that a 10-year process?
Well, there hasn't been a regular coherent district-wide boundary review process, and that's the goal. It's been sort of one-offs, and one of the big criticisms has been, because there's been like super severe issues in one area, but obviously, anytime you change a boundary, not only does it create a lot of angst and concern, but it just has ripple effects, because it obviously affects the surrounding district. So one of the big things we heard in our most recent kind of major boundary review process was, this really needs to be a district-wide discussion and to be a holistic piece. So on the one hand, that means we need to move a little slower to be able to figure that out, and that's why we brought in PSU to help us figure out how to do that. A lot of other districts do do it on a regular basis, and it's something that's just very normalized, and that's where we want to get to, but it's going to take a lot of work and time to get to that point, a couple of years, I would say, probably before we're really kind of have it rolling. In the meantime, we've got, again, you know, issues in every part of the district that are just severe and cannot wait, even more severe, I would venture to say, than some of the ones you brought up tonight. I mean, just because there's, there's just, they're just really pressing. So we're trying to figure out that balance of moving quickly to be able to relieve some of those, but also be able to say, we're actually trying to do this in a systematic, thoughtful way that has buy-in from folks.
And our current thinking right now is that the district-wide would be in place for 16, 17, that'll have been thought, and then what we will have done as part of that process is talk with our community about, how often do we revisit these, and what does that mean? Because it may or may not surprise you, like, I thought it was really generous, there's not every community where some parents are like, "You know, I'm right on the boundary, I'm happy to go to that school if you want." There are some people who believe that because they've had generations, which I understand was so, my mom, my dad, my grandpa, my, "I went to that school, and I go to that school, don't change me." And so that hasn't become a norm for us, even though it is, again, in neighboring districts. And so we have to, again, we want to engage our community to figure out how to, what, what feels right, because people do make, right, home purchases based on the school. I mean, those are real lifelong decisions, so we don't want to, you know, cast it off as if it's not to be considered, at the same time, when you guys, I mean, tears is a very appropriate reaction, right? It's your one kid, it's your two kids, one chance through the system. This is not, this is not something to take lightly. So we want to engage in that.
One of the big things also with the, when we're looking at boundary changes, is you want to make sure, again, it gets back to the, the issue of what is being offered at each of the schools, and is it an equitable offering? Is it as attractive in this school as it is in this school? And we went through a process a few years ago called high school system design, and that was the intent of that process, was to try to make sure that every school was large enough that if we could offer a really enriched and robust program. The last two things in the high school redesign that we hadn't accomplished yet was to get the counselor-to-student ratio down from 400 to 1 to 301. We did that this year finally, and career technical education offerings in each one of our high schools. So we're, we're getting that, we're starting to get that into place. But it, that gets back to the, how much does the board and the superintendent say, "You will have this and this and this," and how much do you want some of our high schools to have a little bit of their own personality? You know, this one has a little more focus on technology, this one a little more on career technical education, this a little bit more on music, whatever it might be. But what I think we want to do is establish that every, you can expect that when you go to high school in Portland Public Schools, you will have these offerings. And what we're looking at now, once we finish that sort of high school redesign, that's really what we're doing now with the K8 system, is we're kind of looking at the whole K8 system and trying to kind of figure out that same thing. What is the baseline that every parent in Portland Public School can and should expect throughout K8, and how are we going to get there?
Well, and again, to be fair, that some of this exists, we have these models in place, but what happened is that we've been in recession, and we've been cutting everything, and so even I think of high school redesign, what kept, it wasn't that we didn't have a vision for what high school should be, it's that we couldn't fund the model as it was supposed to. And so there was a lot of twisting and contorting that has to happen to try to make it look like it's, try to, try to get students everything that they need, when everybody recognized that it wasn't anywhere close to what, what was necessary. And so that's when, for example, the complaint was filed, right? Districts throughout the state said, "Oh, my gosh, none of us are providing that amount of stuff." And so people began applying waivers. It wasn't a one-district choice, it, we, folks had made choices to try to make best do with what was the problem in a situation where the state acknowledges they weren't funding it. And the only way I see that changing, local option levy this fall, and us continuing to not let the legislature, because my experience with the state legislature is they will respond when they hear it consistently across the community. If they hear one group or one vocal group, they think it's a special interest group motivating for whatever. But when, when folks came and they were rallying downtown, when folks were at the legislature and it was across the state, they listened, they began to change, and I just think it requires more of that.
So this gentleman-
Curious about your graduation rate. He shows this picture here, it says that in 2009, 210, you had a 67, well, that was the class, I guess, a 10-room class, right? And you had a 67% graduation. But the, over on the far side, you show the graduation rate for Benson, Lincoln, Cleveland Grant, and none of them, well, the rest are, there's just one, and Madison apparently has less than 67%, the rest of them are all in their 80s. How can that be?
So, no, thank you. Yeah, great question. So, so we have a number of alternative programs in the district, as well as charter schools, and so the 67% is the overall number across the entire district.
Well, but they're not shown here.
Yeah, I think it's the, so it's the all PPS, yeah, so we could break out and hear other, all other high school programs.
All PPS is 67%, right?
Right, right, so-
And that's, that's what you're saying for everybody. How can that be?
So one of the things I, I always like to explain to people is how we come up with our graduation rate, just to start the conversation. It used to be that when a student entered their senior year of high school in September, you would measure whether they graduated nine months later, and that was our graduation rate. So in Portland Public Schools, our graduation rate was like 90-something percent. Many years ago, we decided that a more honest look at our graduation rate would be to look at a student coming in in ninth grade in September, and do they graduate four years later? And that's where this number comes out, because in fact, you lose kids along the way. I would actually like us to see a track from seventh grade on instead.
So it doesn't work. Doesn't work. It doesn't work with what you're telling us here.
Right. So what ends up happening here is, as kids are struggling in different, at different times during their high school career, we have other options that they look at and that we look at, including a whole network of community-based alternative programs that we contract with to help. And we have about 2,500 of our high school kids are in community-based alternative programs. So there is a big discussion going on as to whether or not we should be figuring out, for example, Hillsborough has something called care teams in each of their high schools, where they have a, a social worker and a variety of people who are focused right at each individual high school level to do all the wraparound supports for the child that our community-based alternatives are trying to do instead. And again, that ends up being a funding issue. But I think to answer your question, if you look at our community comprehensives, the kids that last all the way through there, that's the rate you're seeing, but many of those kids are moving from those schools and not being successful in those schools, and then moving into community-based alternatives that we contract with. And those are kids who are, are struggling. I mean, they have been struggling in our traditional high schools, they continue to struggle, and we're trying to give them more supports.
I'm not objecting to that.
So, and the numbers happen, once they move from the community high school to another program, they're no longer counted in that high school one, right?
That's what I was just going to correct. So there are a couple of things, I think, that could be yours. So there are a couple of alternative schools that are not on this list, Alliance High School. I mean, if you look at Madison, Roosevelt, and Jefferson, they're all in the 60%. So when you combine all of those together, that drags, I don't want to say drags it, but it brings us down to 67%. And I just wanted to correct that when a student enters one of our comprehensive high schools, even if they go to a community-based organization, their score four years later still gets attached to that community-based high school. What also winds up bringing this way down is students who join us in halfway through their ninth grade, 10th grade, 11th grade year, because that's where they start, and then they have the three years or the two years to catch up, and that's when you, you'll hear community-based organizations have graduation rates of 9%. Now that will change that percentage in a hurry, right? They're at 9%. Those are students who weren't with us since their ninth grade year. And so that's, it becomes a numerical, you're right to look at this and say, "Numbers aren't quite adding up," but when you take all those students together, it does wind up to be 67%. But also, I appreciate your acknowledgement that if you look at the comprehensive high schools, it's not as dire as some folks would have you believe.
And if you look at a five-year graduation rate, it's closer to 8%.
My point from the beginning is that you, you gave us the information here that-
Yeah.
Doesn't match, doesn't work.
As it are.
And that's why I had to put in the second question, oh, I can't have a two-question question.
We're still going.
We talked a lot.
I am frustrated, because I see all this money being spent to upgrade our high schools, and, and I hear all these people in this room telling me that there's not enough money being spent in the first, second, third grades. And I agree with that totally. I think that you, I hate to say this, but I think you mismanaged, you missed the goal. The goal is, in my opinion, to get the kids a great start in their school, encourage everything, bring them along, and carry them through the eighth grade. If you do that, then the vast majority of them are going to be ready for high school, and your high school graduation rate will go up automatically. But you see that you're going to rebuild Grant, for example, when they need, they got 30 kids in the classroom, my God, why are you doing that?
Well, keep in mind that capital dollars are different, that's a separate set of money than the operating for the cluster. Totally hear what you're saying, I mean, so the-
Those are dollars, and it's money being spent in school board, and so you've got to make your plans. And I think your, your goal is, I've heard this constantly, the goal is, is to get that graduation rate up, get it up. But you can't get it up if you're not spending your money on, on the-
The younger kids.
First, second- First, second, and third grades. Well, then why aren't you spending that on the first, second, and third grades?
So I don't disagree. There are lots of tensions here. One is, as I mentioned before, state has rules about how much high schoolers in elementary and middle schools have to attend school. If PPS was found out of compliance, so we've had to invest more at the high schools recently. But I don't disagree with you, but I would prefer a strategy of investing early on. And I want to re-highlight that the state won't allow us, we just, you, you all just passed a bond, a capital bond, for us to rebuild buildings to address some of the facility issues. Those are by law, they cannot be spent in the classroom.
Yes, yes.
So no, no general fund dollars that we're putting in programs are being used for those facilities.
But you brought the bond. You brought the block. You said, you said, this is what we need. We need half a billion dollars. And, and, okay, and they gave it to you, and you got a new, a great new football field and.
Different funds.
Yeah. How much did the roof in this, at Wilson High School cost?
Three million, about three million.
Three million?
Yeah. And it was leaking into this building, because I've been in this building when it's been leaking into the building.
But it goes back to the point that we brought the bond because we knew that we had facility needs, and the only way we can do, not the only way, the wisest choice is to use money that can only be used for facilities is to use facility funding. So that we don't, so that we could save the money that comes from the state to invest in the programs. So we could have ignored the facility, but then we'd still have bad facilities and still not be addressing the K three.
And in terms of the facilities bond, just so you know, we have eight years of summer work projects that includes seismic upgrades so our kids can be safer, and roof upgrades, accessibility upgrades, so the buildings can be accessed. We're adding some elevators in some buildings and the rest. And you're right, we have three high schools and then one, we actually have a Fabian K eight, which is being built with Concordia University. Concordia came to us and said they wanted to do a capital campaign to raise five to seven and a half million dollars. And so with that partnership, they're actually building their school of education at Concordia K eight, which is just an absolutely amazing opportunity. But to answer your question, it's a, it's a completely separate pot of money. You should know that our, in terms of our superintendent's priorities for this year and where we're investing money, one of her top three priorities is to ensure that a hundred percent of our third graders are reading by the end of third grade, and that would be within the next two years. We also have another priority around disproportionate discipline and exclusionary discipline. Portland Public Schools is out of, out of line in terms of where we should be on that. And the rest, and the third priority is around house, high school graduation. So it's, it's not an either or, it's, it's a both and. I mean, you can't, but you're right. I mean, you have to have a strong foundation as you go, or, or the kids aren't going to make it.
So I wanted to come back to one of Will Fuller's points that I didn't hear you respond to, and that's the equity funding. Now, as I understand it, if you don't have something like thirty percent of your students in poverty, you get nothing. And it seems to me that it ought to be on a per student basis, so even if you have a limited number of students in need, they should get some support. Because here in southwest Portland, there's almost nothing for students that are in need, right? We have the SUN School at the middle school level, and that's it. Our principal has been over on the east side of one of these high poverty schools. They get forty or fifty federal programs, they get all sorts of extra funding from PPS, and it just seems to me it ought to be on a per student basis. Why is it not?
I thought, I think the formula does take into account per student.
Well, not the federal programs, but the.
Yeah.
The match of.
Yeah.
Historically underserved than SES. And SES is part of the funding formula, per child.
Yeah, that is per child.
But you're not going to get as much if you don't have as many low-income kids, you're not going to get as many of those funds, but it is.
So there's a cutoff, or you don't get any.
Disproportion, it is disproportionate.
Yeah. But through our racial educational equity policy, I mean, it's just, there are, there are students that this has been failing for decades. And so the, the equity formula is an attempt to try to be able to level the playing field. It is a per student, but it does definitely end up with less money for schools that have a smaller proportion. That's always been a challenge, particularly for schools that have sort of like a relatively small number of kids in poverty versus the critical mass, where absolutely there are, you know, you can leverage a bunch of different funds. At the same time, of course, a lot of those funds or grants come with all kinds of compliance requirements and mandates, that it's not necessarily a picnic for principals to be able to, to spend and apply those for kids either. But we're recognizing that we failed a lot of our kids in every part of this district. But just the way the demographics of our city and the history of ways things have grown up, there's concentrations of poverty in some parts of our city. So we're recognizing that we do need to put additional funds for those.
Then what you're saying is if you're a poor person, you better move to one of those places, because that's where you can get help. You can't get it here in southwest, even though we've built a lot of low-income housing.
I, I appreciate what you're saying, it's just a little bit of a misnomer. So for example, you have Stevens Crossing, which just recently opened. We provided additional support, both at the middle school and at Hayhurst and a number of things. So to characterize it that way is a little bit black and white, a little extreme. It's not quite that, there's definitely a disparity. And I've, I've heard in schools in southwest to say, boy, the student here struggle, who is, who is at the poverty line is going to have a harder time than, than at a school with high poverty. I, I can't disagree with that, but I also don't, I don't, there's not an easy fix to that. We can't pull them away from a high poverty where they do need support. It, it does give a proportional amount, and I hear you saying that it doesn't feel like enough. And I think that's, that's a theme that we've heard in Oregon education for quite some time, there's not enough. There's, I haven't heard anybody talk about TAG, right? I mean, are we losing the kids that are supposed to be advancing? What are we doing to invest in TAG? They're worth seventy-five percent of the funding that the state by law is required to fund, but because they have a safety valve of, or we can report on it, they don't have to fund it. Other states have taken their state legislature to court and won. State of Washington, the billions of dollars that the state legislature has to pay. So again, I, I don't want to keep passing this off, I hear what you're saying. We do accommodate for it, I hear that it's not enough, and I, I agree.
Folks, folks that we haven't heard from yet?
Can people behind the camera talk?
Yeah, I was going to try and ask you. I have a technology question, you guys brought that up real early on, and I think April sixteenth, that board meeting, you presented by central staff about how we're going to deal with the testing. And you guys were asking questions of the staff, I think Melissa Goff, and what does our technology look like across the district? Because it's, doesn't seem like, you know, I, my particular school is dealing with nine-year-old, you know, unsupported XP machines, and then I hear stories of people that have, are going to be taking tests on new iPads. So you, a couple of you asked a question, can we get like an inventory? And I heard that at the beginning of this meeting too, we need to get back to where we know what is going on in our schools. How's that coming? Like, do we, do we know yet? How's that, has the staff gotten an answer?
My understanding is it's in the recommendation for the superintendent's one-time-only money proposal that we're about to talk about tomorrow. So listen to our discussion tomorrow about how that's coming. But I'm going to just piggyback on that point, because part of that conversation was also a question of the new assessment tests. And not only are they more, they, they challenge students in a different way with what they're asking students to do, but they're also really technology-heavy, meaning that students, rather than write their response, will have to type their response, third grade, type their response. They'll have to click and drag, draw lines, all with mouse manipulation. So we have real concerns. In fact, you might have seen an article in Oregonian that we are considering, tomorrow night we'll be talking about it, considering not, not making, not making targets for our third, fifth, and eighth graders, or seventh, sixth graders, seventh, eighth. And that's partly twofold. One, there is, the state can't provide us any information what a realistic target is. So when other states have piloted these, or when they've rolled out these tests, about thirty percent of their kids have passed. Thirty percent of the new assessments is what we're expecting to pass, but that's just a guess on what other states have done. Traditionally, we've been setting targets at a hundred percent, eighty percent, seventy percent. So we've asked, which, which end of the spectrum do we go with, knowing that some of the kids are even struggling typing their answer in, right? And so we're struggling with, the state can't provide us that information, and they're not going to provide it for us before about March, and they'll test in May, but they're asking us to set our targets now. And so we're, we're stating back to the state, you know what, this, this isn't reasonable. We don't know what targets to set. If you could give us a benchmark, and that's aside from whether or not this is the first year of the test, we don't know if they're reliable. We don't know, we, we don't know anything about the test. It's proprietary information, it's owned by the company that exists, or that, that's doing the test. So they haven't let us look at the tests, they have some samples online. So we're struggling as a, as a board to figure out, how do we set aspirational goals? How do we hold ourselves accountable? How do we keep making the progress that we, that we've been making? And, I mean, we pick a number out of a hat tomorrow to figure out what we'll put on these achievement tests, scores. And then we don't know what the state will do. Well, you missed the tech, you, you missed the mark. Will we be punished for that? We, we don't know. They, they won't tell us, they can't tell us, so.
So we used to use something in Oregon called an Oaks test, and now we're switching over to something called the Smarter Balanced Test. So that's the discussion. You'll hear a lot about Common Core, the, the bigger issue is the assessment or the test that's going to be used with our kids. And one of the other issues that we have with as many emerging bilingual students as we have is that the test is only given in English. And so, you know, how are, how are our children who don't know English going to do on that? And what kind of penalties will there be for their results? So, yeah, there's a lot of huge issues. And, you know, the other thing is we really don't anymore teach typing skills. And so if you're, if you're doing, if you're supposed to type in a, a response, you know, how, how long, it may be the student knows exactly what the answer is, but they're, you know, trying to figure out how to type it in when they're not particularly familiar, especially with maybe a poor kid who doesn't have a computer at home. You know, they, we have to spend time prepping them to do test-taking rather than learning, so it's an issue.
And I was just talking to, I'm sorry to belabor the point, but I was just talking to a principal in another district, who was talking to some folks in Oregon City, and they also piloted some of the tests. And the state's saying that the, the test should take about eight or nine hours to administer. And their experience in Oregon City when they piloted the test was that it took about eighteen hours to administer. And so it's just really challenging, and I don't want to, I personally don't want to throw the baby out with the bathwater. We asked the state in a resolution in July if they would hold off on using the results for the assessment for any kind of judging or evaluating. They came back and said no. In fact, we just got an email this evening when we said we, some of us asked, well, what happens if we don't set targets for those? Like, what will the state do to us? And they basically came back and said, you won't be able to submit your targets in compliance with state law, because it has to have a numerical value between zero and a hundred percent or something like that, so.
I mean, I think for us it boils down to, this is, this is a huge transition for our state, right? To be able to have a new assessment and to move towards these new standards. And I feel like that's moving in the right direction. I am not sorry to see the last of the Oaks test, but none of us, and we said very clearly in the resolution, we're not about teaching to the test, we want to have education for the whole child. And there's huge challenges with the state in professional development for our teachers, the technology, all those other pieces. So this is a huge transition, and we feel like there needs, this needs to be seen as a transitional period, and the state needs to allow for that. So we've set it through the means we have to.
As clearly as we can.
As clear as we can, and a fairly lengthy and detailed resolution, which you can find online, share that with the powers that be at the state and federal level. But they're moving forward, right? The train is out of the station. So it's going to be something that, you know, our kids can be huge, obviously for our teachers, our students, our families. So we're going to continue to raise our concerns for those who are.
Maybe you can set a participation target.
Yeah, well, that's.
Five percent pass. The state, the state already requires a participation target, so that's.
Yeah, that's, that's one of the accountability pieces in the Achievement Compact. Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, well, so I wondered, what happens if you set your expectations so low that you're absolutely certain to meet them and exceed them?
I think they'll reject them and send them back. Keep in mind, the governor said forty-four twenty, a hundred percent, where, you know, he set the goal that a hundred percent of our kids, obviously we all want to get there, right? But to be able to get to that point, I mean, it's, the Oregon Education Investment Board is sort of the new body that's in charge, and they're, they are, we're trying to share our concerns as we go, let me just put it that way.
That's the strategy, is that we can, we could set them at five percent, right? And say, look, we got seven percent.
I, I was.
Yeah.
Do you really feel that you might be as low as seven percent?
I don't think.
I, I think the point is, is we have no way of.
And by setting them very low this year, and then higher next year, that, and so.
Well, we're back, we, we're required, we're back mapping from a hundred percent, and is it twenty twenty?
Twenty twenty-five.
Twenty twenty-five. And in order to get to that level for a graduation rate, which obviously we want to do, and we're focusing a ton of resources and attention on that, but to be able to get there, the growth has to be pretty, it has to be accelerated.
And there were, there were districts last year that set what the state considered too low of targets, and they actually sent them back and said, we do.
But there are many things that goes slowly and then right up. And if, the state hasn't given you adequate either time or information.
Right.
To prepare reasonably, plan to start really slowly, and then in the last three years.
And it's absolutely a strategy.
And we do actually think that our overall graduation rate and achievement is going to start accelerating as we have a little bit more money in, in, investment in the system.
Once you know what's expected.
Right. More teachers.
And make clear what is required in the way of the technology and.
Right. I think we've been trying to do that. Yeah.
This, this hits really to some key educational values. One of them being, what's authentic assessment?
Right.
And I quite agree that, given the reliability status of these tests, put them off for a while and talk about what you really do, which ties into something of motivation. With overwhelmed principals, teachers with their heads spinning with new things, and kids wondering, why go to school? Because there's nothing for me there, we are killing motivation, which is absolutely essential to get something learned.
Yeah.
So I, I concur with that, thinking in terms of whatever we're doing, dealing with what is the most effective, proven way of getting the education results, one being well-prepared teachers who are supported when they go in the class, is where I would put some priority money no matter what level it is. And really, talk about this as an education issue rather than piecemeal testing, creating, or technology and stuff.
Right. Yeah, we had the Achievement Compact Committee, which was the mandated body to work on this, which we were able to add even though the state doesn't, we allowed ex officio, I think we had, it was PTA, and. Communities of color. And communities of color, even though the state doesn't officially let that to happen. But anyway, that group, working with the teachers, came forward, and they're the ones who have said to us, based on the guidance from your resolution, we're recommending that you not set these targets because of the concerns. And it was really great to have both, you know, teachers and staff together presenting to us. And they came up with a whole long list of all the things along the lines, the joy of learning and the other pieces that we need to be seeing. And obviously, we agree with that, but it's figuring out, given sort of the direction and the mandates that we are, that we need to respond to, how we're going to, how we're going to work through it, so.
I also, I also just want to caution a little bit, you use the term authentic assessment, and that means something very specific to educators.
I use that specific term.
Right, okay. So I just wanted to point out that when I first came to Oregon, they had just changed to something more authentic assessment, the SIM CAM, where you could put portfolios of work.
Oh, yeah.
And that, that came and went. It wasn't as effective as people were hoping. So I just, there is no silver bullet. I think to your point about, how do we still instill motivation? How do we continue to joy of learning? How do we effectively measure progress? And how do we support our teachers? So this last year, again, as we saw the budget improving, we put in additional money for what's called our teacher mentoring program, so that especially new teachers would come in and feel supported. And we took teachers, they can't be effective teachers that were doing well, that were interested in mentoring other new teachers, and they can't be out of the classroom for any more than three years to make sure that they're still fresh and they experience what it was like in the classroom. So absolutely, we have to support our teachers, and that's where we're investing.
Before too many more people leave, I want to do one more little quick thing here. The Portland Council PTA has endorsed the levy, and if you're interested in any further The Forum Council PTA has endorsed the LEVI, and if you're interested in any further information about that, Otto, who's in the back there, will be in the front of the school with stuff you can get and take home. This is from the PTA, not from PPS, and we can't say anything more than that, because we're in an official PPS meeting, but we do want you to not walk away without some resources if you would like them, and we will provide them.
And also, before we wrap up, I just wanted to make sure that you know that Superintendent Smith has been here all night listening to. Keeping my lists. Listening to all of your questions and concerns. We also have John Isaacs, who's with our communications department, and Roseanne is our new school board manager. So if you ever have any questions or you want to sign up to testify at a school board meeting or whatever, she's your, she's your person as well. Any final comments or questions before we wrap up? I think, Michael, let Scott.
You hear from me, but I just want to point out, this is all connected. I mean, what, the testing drives the choices that principals make. It's why we don't have PE or music or art. And that's been in large part district-driven for years. So, you know, you guys are putting up a little bit of resistance to this, the Smarter Balanced Test. That's so Orwellian. Do more. I mean, my kids have graduated. If my, if my kid, if I had a kid who was going to be subject to 19 hours of testing, I would be signing that release form so quickly, I wouldn't put my kid through that.
Michael?
Well, I have a slightly different lemon, so lemonade take. Certainly, there's a short-term issue, and particularly, as you point out, for kids having typing skills or the ability to draw lines using a mouse and so on. But frankly, those are skills that are very apropos in the workplace.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I would encourage you, I was really impressed. I went to the PTA meeting at Robert Gray last week. Beth Madison and her technology lead is a teacher named David Kennedy, and using some Chromebooks that were purchased by the parents, they really put together a nice program with technology where they are learning keyboarding, they are learning a whole bunch of other things you can do with computers. He tries to tie, I mean, as anybody who has kids know, video, video games are very popular, and that might even get at Will's joy of learning kind of thing.
Right.
So I think there may be an opportunity, although it's a struggle in the short term, to really teach some skills that will be very useful to kids, and also that could be fun.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that.
So I encourage you to talk to Beth, talk to David Kennedy.
Aaron had it.
Well, I was just going to say, I really love Bob's idea of not, of setting the targets at 100 percent and just sending those back in. I would really support that. And I really was worried about listening to board meetings and this testing issue for probably 18 months now at this point, because since 2010, there's been some early implementation back east that it's not going well at all, and it's not been encouraging. And I would hate to see us walk right into that. So I think there would be very many people that would support you against the state if you wanted to push back a little bit on the state. And thank you for doing what I'm hearing you do, as of late.
So, and you have a final?
So as one of the people who did participate in the conversation around the whole rollout of testing and Achievement Compact, the most powerful thing that came out of that is the litany of other things that you should be looking at. And you have a little bit of additional revenue that you should prioritize some things. I'm glad to hear some of them mentioned tonight. But what came out over and over, particularly from the principals, was the need for wraparound services. So the kids that are really struggling, the kids that we are obsessing about in the, are they going to get through the milieu and get out of school into adulthood, they are kids who would benefit most greatly from wraparound services and a focus on the whole child. And, and so when you have an opportunity to do that, go with it, because I do believe that the broader public will understand and support you. I think that it is too easy to get preoccupied with numbers. We all do it. Numbers are important, but they aren't the only thing. And the Achievement Compact discussions were profound, because there were people who never agree on, a majority of things in the room agreeing on litany that you have. So go, go over those carefully, and to the extent that you can invest in them, please do.
Thank you. Yeah, it's hugely valuable to get, to make your work on the committee. So I just thank you, everybody, for coming out tonight. Any, and thank you for Carol for being here and staff for organizing this. There's going to be more, John, I don't know if we're going to get the word out, so there's going to be these around the district at the different high schools.